All right. Now that we're out of executive session, we're gonna jump all the way up to number 16th, Consent Agenda. Chief, do you have a presentation for us?
You wanted to present two awards to two young men?
Is it on?
It was.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna just go and read off this paper. On July 13, 2023, approximately 6:30 PM, Palm Valley Police Department responded to a call of a house fire.
Chief, what's your name?
My name is Juan.
It's all?
Yes.
There you go. Okay.
Excellent.
All right. The fire was on the 1900 block of Tangerine, which is on the other side of the city. Upon arrival, Sergeant Ramon Teo and Officer Albino Cisneros observed that the house was engulfed in flames and the fire appeared to be located toward the rear of the house. It was determined that the homeowner had made several attempts to extinguish the fire but was unsuccessful. Emergency personnel were notified and the homeowners then made a valiant effort to extinguish the fire. Sergeant Teo and Officer Cisneros responded and were first on scene to assess the ongoing situation. They soon learned that prior to their arrival, two young men who had been passing by observed smoke and flames coming from the northwest rear of the residence. Scott Adams, a Palm Valley resident, and Kevin Seha of Harlingen, Texas, quickly acted realizing that they needed to act in the moment. Adams immediately ran to the front door of the residence to contact the resident and began to aid the family as well as their pets in evacuating the house to prevent severe smoke inhalation. Seha ran to the back of the house and gained access to the backyard through the side gate. He quickly observed the resident who had attempted to extinguish the flames and the resident was on fire. Seha took quick action and grabbed the resident and threw him into a nearby swimming pool to extinguish the flames. Seha then pulled the resident from the swimming pool and safely took him to the front of the residence for medical attention. Emergency and fire rescue personnel arrived on the scene and began initiating care for all the occupants and extinguished the fire. The resident's at Tangerine are alive today due to the actions of these two young men. They found themselves in a very tense situation with distraught residents as a fire raged in front of them. They quickly assessed the situation and worked together as a team and were able to save everyone, including the family pets. Scott Adams and Kevin Seha are commended for their exemplary conduct during this potentially tragic situation. Scott and Kevin both exhibited courage and tenacity in rescuing this family from a highly hazardous situation. The Palm Valley, the City of Palm Valley and the Palm Valley Police Department are proud to honor Scott Adams and Kevin Seha with a life-saving award.
On behalf of the citizens of Palm Valley and the city council, thank you so much for your bravery. Thank you very much. There's got very many people out there that would have done what you have done and my hat's off to y'all. Y'all are brave young men. Keep up the good work.
Thanks, sir.
Mayor, may I make a quick comment?
Everything. Go ahead.
So gentlemen, my name's Scott Nelson. I am a paramedic and have been for 30-plus years. I started as a firefighter. I can't tell you how overwhelmingly proud I am that there are people like you willing to step up and take the initiative to do what you saw clearly needed to be done. My request of you would be to continue your caring for your fellow man and if you are looking at some point at a career in fire or EMS or medicine, please reach out and I will be happy to write you a letter of recommendation to get you into those programs and help you as much as I can. So thank you very much for that. It restores my faith in man when I hear things like this happening. So, strong work. I just, I wish I was there to shake your hand and give you a hug to thank you for this, but unfortunately, work called and I'm out of town, but thank you so much.
I'd just like to say thank you, thank you so much because very few people will run to the fire. Very few people will run to the danger and stuff and everything and this country in this time especially, it needs people that do that and everything and you're an example and I hope that when someday if it occurs to me that I step up to the plate like you two did and stuff and I salute you and I'm particularly proud of what you've done. And I thank you very much.
Thank you.
We good?
All right.
Thank you for raising two hands.
That's your boy. And then those two are, yeah, I mean, yeah, good job.
I feel like I had the ILC on a cross-country flight.
See you. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Thank you. All right. Do we have any other items on consent agenda, chief? There you go. I lost the chief.
You lost the chief.
Chief?
He probably is taking pictures.
That's fine.
He's coming. He's coming.
Very fast.
There you go. Any more items on consent agenda?
No, sir. Nothing to add today.
All right. Sounds good. All right. Any items for discussion on consent agenda? Jose, you have anything?
Good evening, council. So I had presented in the packet the budget adjustments. Those are just the transfers that need to be done to get the access database that we have, which tracks all of our transactions back in line to what we have in our budget. There's a couple of transfers that need to be done from the water system into the city for reimbursement because the the original payment should have been from the water because the water's the one collecting that money, but they were paid with city checks. So the water department needs to reimburse the city for that. And there's just other transfers. I spoke to Samantha Atkinson, our auditor. She recommended a couple of general ledger entries to change those account numbers to accounts that we can expense those items. But that's the main gist.
That'll be agenda 13 and 14. We'll come back to that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other discussion on consent agenda? Have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, let's go back to number eight. Discussion and possible action on selecting finalists for our city secretary as discussed in executive session. All right. Do we have any discussion on that one?
No, we aren't.
We have four finalists.
Oh, we're just gonna announce that?
We're not gonna announce the names just?
No, but I mean that we have four candidates that we're gonna interview. And is that what our next meeting's about? It's August 24th.
And so? So on number eight, we have a motion. Do I hear a motion on number eight?
I move that that with the four selected finalists, that we meet on August 24th, Thursday at 6:00 PM to interview.
I second that. We got eight and nine all wrapped into one.
Oh, start off down. Fill two parts with homestead.
There you go. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
We'll be meeting again on August 24, 2023, 6:00 PM to interview the four finalists. Number 10, discussion, possible action on the bids received from vendors on the City of Palm Valley and Drainage District Number Five project through the Harlingen Country Club. I have David Flynn's office here. Ferris Flynn Medina here. Chief presents.
Yeah, we have.
You'll have those?
Yeah, we do.
So I'm David Flynn, the principal at Ferris Flynn Medina. This is Tony Ranja. He's the actual project engineer on the project. Little background on this. The application to Water Development Board was done in 2020 and we, at the end of 2020, beginning of 21, they got, they said, okay, turn in the application, the full-blown application. We were selected to be funded. So the point of that is the numbers are really 2020 numbers because once you got that amount, that was it. So here we are in '23 bidding the project. So we had three bidders ranging from 1.96 million rounded up to 2.8 million. So the budget with contingencies is 1.27 million. So what we would recommend, and we still have to run some traps on this, is we vetted out the low bidder, which is NM Contracting. We've been given so far positive responses. They're essentially a general contractor that subs out all the work and that's no different than Spawglass or Noble, those type of contractors. So that's not a flag. However, we need to cut the scope of work to get it close to the budget. So we had a meeting yesterday with the mayor and Drainage District Five manager and Alan Moore, who's a retired manager, and discussed some options. And basically, long and the short is eliminate the crossing of Palm Valley Drive South, which is a big box culvert rebuilding the street where we tear it up, water and sewer redone where we have to cross it. And that totals about $578,000. That gets the cost of the project down to 1.38 million. So we're assured at $104,000. So where do we get the $104,000? You know, you guys have been collecting this money for drainage. Maybe that's it. We've talked to Water Development Board about other funding available. They said, well, yeah, there might be some money. I mean, I mean, to me, that's just, we're in 2024 building or whatever because those guys don't move fast. So basically, we need to find $104,000 and go with NM Contracting. The steps to get that done, we would have to rerun the hydraulic model with the two 60-inch pipes that are there versus the changing out one to a box culvert. Those results will tell us what the water surface will be and we extrapolate that into how many houses are gonna be damaged or not damaged, right? It's gonna change that a little bit. And what the Water Development Board had in their application on the original request for the money and then we had the actual application, they call it a benefit-cost ratio and that's what they really grade the project on. And so we're relatively confident that we rerun the numbers. We're still gonna be within the money. Then we, so we're reducing the project by 30%. Typically, you can do 25% or less. It's really not, it's okay. We're beyond that. So to get that done and go with NM Contracting, they have to agree to that. And we've talked to them and they said, we can work with that verbally, okay? Then we gotta get Water Development Board to agree to that and agree that we can reduce the scope and the benefit-cost ratios is still within the numbers. So that's what we're recommending. And if that all, we've already started the hydraulic analysis of District Five's engineer does that. We've already contacted him. He's gonna have that next week. We would run the benefit-cost ratio. We've talked preliminarily to Water Development Board. They gotta talk to management. You know, we're not, we're talking to the guy that's over our project. So we're working through that and we just need to see where we get $104,000. So that's our recommendation on the project.
And is that, I mean, there's no more negotiation? I mean, you can't go back to them and say, we want that little box culvert for 1.5 or 1.3?
It's an open bid. You'd have to rebid the project. You can't.
Oh, you can't negotiate? You can't go back?
Hey, oh.
Well, you're just a bearer of venues.
So I'm looking at, on this bid sheet or whatever, a bid tabulation and that box was 403,000, but is there something else that you added to that?
Yeah, so then you've got the street repair item. You've got the water and sewer.
And those?
Items. There's some storm sewer that we're gonna have to tear out put back and the inlet boxes that are right there. All those add up to 576,000.
It's a, the short 104,000, is that not, is that including the, what you have there from the drainage fee, the $24 a month? Is that included in that?
He probably doesn't know that.
He wouldn't know that. I wouldn't know that. So you've been collecting that money?
Yes.
And I don't know how much you've collected. I'm just saying that money is earmarked for drainage and it would make, I mean, I'm a logical thinker, so I'm just saying, okay, well, they've got the money. Y'all gotta say, yeah, we wanna do it or no, we're not doing it.
Oh. And so what about with the water board? How big a rock is that to push uphill to get them to approve these changes?
Well, he talked to the, so the guy's in charge or it's assigned to this project is a young young guy. You know, he, and so he didn't really have any decision-making power. And so we're trying, we were talking, we're gonna talk, call him again tomorrow
Okay.
and try to talk to, who's your manager? We need to really, we need to move quickly on this and just move forward.
Sure.
Or we rebid it. But at the end of the day, we've gotta, we've gotta modify the scope and we still gotta get Water Development Board to agree that this loan money is, because we changed the scope, they've gotta agree it's okay because they're loaning you the money based on the bigger scope. So, and the way that would go down if it happened, would we, would award the 1.958 million and the next agenda item would be a change order to reduce it down to this number?
So, Jose, do you know how much we have?
220,000.
Oh, wait, it's, that's the 220.
220,000 is what we have right now.
With the omission of that.
Yeah, but we'd have to get Water Development Board and then we, and so we'd have to go back and they would review it again and they took them five months to approve.
It's longer than that.
And so it's 2024 then.
Yeah.
And the, and numbers historically have gone up. I mean, the pandemic, you know, I do construction projects all the time and during the pandemic, there were, nothing stopped on the construction project side. And in September '21, it just went from 20 numbers, a little bit more, '21, spring, summer, and then all of a sudden it just went like that. It hadn't come down. That's the new normal, I guess you could say. And it was 60% was what we were seeing higher than the budgets. Water Development Board has the same problem on other projects with this flood infrastructure fund, projects that they approved back when we were doing our deal and now they're all going out to be let for bid and they're all high.
So they may not freak out and kick it out.
They're not freaked out. They're just, you know, I guess they haven't run all the traps of, yeah, we can loan you more money, but it's a loan. So the payments go up. Y'all have an agreement District Five for a certain amount, right? So that would all have to be revisited and agreed to and we're in 2024 in my, if we get a new revised loan or an add-on loan to make the money up, it's not gonna happen.
And just so that everybody knows, this ditch is, there's no bells and whistles, this bid that's there. And the majority of the infrastructure is just gonna be, take place, I wanna say the majority of the flooding issues that will be resolved are gonna be from outside Palm Valley. Is that correct?
There's other projects. Is that what you're implying?
No, just that floodwater comes into Palm Valley.
Yeah, so the, so the ditch right now, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna build this concrete channel and right now the channel is grass. It's up here and there's a 30-inch pipe right here. And the reason that needs to come out is when we get a rain, it's gotta fill up and it starts flowing. It's gotta fill up more and more until it really starts flowing in the ditch and then water really starts moving. But before that, it's not, it can only flow so much. All the water is backing up in Stewart Place to the west because it can't get through and then all of a sudden it can. We've missed a window of time for water to go east of us, other side of Deworth. So the eight-by-six box makes it better, but it's not, I mean, the 30-inch pipe coming out and it's concrete lined is the lion's share of the lower of the water surface.
That's much better than the eight-inch. So can we go back at a later date, like, let's say, you know, we're collecting that drainage fee and, and maybe we get a grant or something, or maybe Primera gets us some money or decide to go in with us. But can we go back and do that at a later date, is what I'm saying?
Well, you know, so theoretically, if you think about it, you've got a loan of 1.276 million for construction and you wouldn't have to kick in your money till that's exhausted, right? And this is a six-to-eight-month project. So we started in November.
We might get.
You know, you're looking at the summer before you're really having to tap into your own funds, which I would guess the 220 would be a bigger number.
Yes.
Because you're collecting it, right?
Yes.
But when you say grants, it's tough for the city to get grants because of the mean salary of the citizens.
The, we can change order up, but if we change order down, we can't reduce the scope of the project. In other words, we can do more on the project, but not less than, let's say, this 30% reduction we're talking about.
You can do the change order down. Yes, you can. But so if it's 25% or less, it's in the, it's in the spec book. The contractor's gonna go, okay, you know, it didn't, it changed the scope. But when you get beyond that, he can go, hey, well, I'm gonna revisit my numbers. And the reason being that because we've got, you know, I don't know, 30 bid items and he may put a lot of profit in one or two and then you got rid of the ones he had the profit in. That's why.
Yeah. It's a 30%.
Reducing it by 30% monetarily.
I see we still need to try to do that.
We're actively pursuing that and, I mean, the project, even if we rebid it, we've gotta get Water Development Board to agree to a revised scope based on the original application loan description of work.
Is that, do you get any feel that you think we might be able to at least get this thing started before 2023 is over?
If Water Development Board plays ball with us, so to speak, yes, we can start in November. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna lose a little time going back and forth with them and getting them because they just don't move fast. Just, it's the new normal, unfortunately. So.
Call the senator.
Yeah.
Running around somewhere here. Any more questions? Any more discussion?
I would anticipate if y'all wanna pursue this recommendation that we will need some kind of a letter saying the city will kick in whatever to give to Water Development Board, go and hear they're good. We get a letter from NM Contracting saying we're okay with the reduction of over 25% to 30. We would have to have those documents, but anyway.
When do you need those?
Before next, no, but I mean, before next meeting, a month away?
Yes.
Yeah, then we need a motion right now.
Yep.
Okay with that? I wanted to get this wording proper, you know, make a motion to cover expenses of 104,000? Is that what you're saying?
Roughly 104,000.
Roughly 104,000 dollars to cover the expenses beyond what we had originally anticipated with this project.
Using the drain.
And from, from, from our drainage fund, correct?
With the omission of the revised scope, 30%, the scope, the change, with the, the change in scope.
Okay. We'll get all that in there.
Poor Jose.
Okay.
Does somebody wanna repeat that motion again?
That can't be done. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we can. So we wanna reduce the bid by 30%.
Yeah, and how much are we talking about? 500 what?
576,000.
Okay, we reduce that bid by 570-some-odd thousand dollars and by eliminating the box culverts and the other things that go along with it on the south end of the project and then to allocate 104,000 dollars from our drainage fund to cover the added expenses that are beyond what the original estimate was. We good?
Do I, you got a motion on the table? Do I hear a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Lower your voice.
Thank you, sir.
Number 11, discussion and possible action on the grant writing services that was discussed on April 18, 2023 meeting. This is brought forth by Matt Baker, Councilman Baker.
Yes, and so you included in our packet?
Yes, that is a go-buy RFP.
Like a standard RFP for groundwriting, pretty much.
And so?
And in there, if we do-
And in there, if if we do advertise this and we do get qualified candidates and then basically they're going to be instructed, every single grant that they come up with, they're going to have to pay themselves out of the grant. That way it doesn't impact our budget.
But some of them. Yeah, because they both of them mentioned that if they're lower grants, they they don't do that. If like if it's a grant for like five thousand or ten thousand dollars, they're not going to pay themselves out of that.
I don't think we're going to be wasting our time with five thousand dollar grants.
Never know.
All grants that they go for and they do try to get, we have to approve them.
Okay.
So would this go out, this request for proposals to who?
That would be on our website and then we'd have to advertise it.
Where do you advertise it?
All over, whether it's in the paper, it's going to be on a T M L, it's going to be on our website.
Okay. And and they just automatically, well, I can see them going to T M L.
Right.
But they might not automatically look at our website, but.
If they're fishing around and they know their job, then they have search engines created where it's going to pop up automatically.
Okay, okay.
Or if they're a member of T M L, they automatically get, hey, by the way, you're looking for this type of job. It pops up on their emails.
And when will this go out?
You all need to approve it.
Okay.
Let's prove it now.
Yeah, I mean, I I read through it. I mean, it's just like.
Covers as much as possible. Any other questions, concerns, discussion? You have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the grant writing services discussed on April eighteenth for the city of Palm Valley.
That's already been approved.
Yeah, the request.
Oh, sorry, for proposal, sorry. Request for proposals, I make a motion for request for proposals on the grant writing services company.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, number twelve, discussion and possible action on the advanced metering infrastructure AMI project and the water flow measuring solutions. This is pretty much the same thing. I brought that RFP so y'all can review. And so that that one can be advertised as well.
Now, is this meter size any, I mean, is this standard pretty much?
There was several different variations, but I was looking for the one that pertained to the American Water Development Board. What is it? There was a.
AMI?
Yeah, well, no, that's Advanced Metering Infrastructure, but there is.
American Water Works Association.
American Water Works Association standards. As long as it met that, you know, I wanted to make sure that we covered that.
Okay.
I also put in there that we will not accept any cellular type meters. There are going to be wireless meters that have a, I don't know what what kind of frequency they use. It's Bluetooth or whatever they use.
What did you say?
As long as it needs.
Cellular?
Yeah, cellular. Yeah, not cellular, because if you use cellular, it's really good. But at the same time, you're paying a like a cell phone bill for each one and that's just huge money.
That's what they discussed at that day.
And the specs are there on page three. They have to have a twenty-year lifespan of service. They also have to meet that FCC part twenty-four and part ninety. That pertains to an encrypted radio frequency, so nobody can be going into and seeing their meter service. Yeah, pretty much changing, yeah.
All right, okay.
I think that FCC part ninety also says that they're not allowed to have anything that puts out a radio wave that interferes with our home system. So it can interfere with your TV or satellite or anything like that.
Yeah, home P D S I, correct.
Yep.
There's a motion.
Um, I make a motion that we post the request for proposals for advanced metering infrastructure, water meters, AMI.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
Okay, back to number thirteen, discussion, possible action to approve the budget amendments for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budgets. Jose, can you bring that to our attention again?
So we didn't get anything in our packet then?
I put the part copy of the memo on the on the spots.
Oh, right here?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, so as I was talking before, so there's the reimbursement from the water department to the city's general fund. These payments come from from, there was different transactions. For example, the fire service fee, we collect that in the water bill. And that's what gets paid out to the Harlingen Fire Department. It was paid with the city check for the last three quarters. So the water department needs to reimburse the city's general fund for that money. And then apart from that, there's just the the normal payroll taxes and and the employees insurance. I included the a page from the our system where it's the account that's called due from water service. It should be the third page. Those are all the transactions currently in the system that the water department needs to reimburse the city. And so that total adds up to at the bottom. And then for the transfers, to speaking about the drainage fee account, it had been collected in the water. It it does get collected in the water bill, but it hasn't been transferred out to its own drainage fee account for the fiscal year. So there needs to be that transfer done so we can separate that money from just the the normal cash account for the water.
I bet that was that because first community bank came in here and did that.
So so there is last year's portion has been separated, which is actually about three hundred and eighty thousand, which is currently there. And then the portion collected for this year hasn't been separated.
So it's been being collected, it's been just being put in the wrong account. So now we need to put it back in the right account in order to balance, we need to move it where it belongs.
Because we collect it from the water bills. When the water bill gets paid, it gets deposited to the water account. So then we need to do the transfer out. And then for the budget adjustments, I recommended, I recommend making the tri-city run event budget adjustment so we can include those income and expense items. I calculated the the how much income we had gotten and how much expense we had. And that that would allow us to transfer, it wouldn't actually be a transfer because it's already been paid and collected. But in our books, it would allow us to separate them from the miscellaneous accounts and from those budgets. And then for the solid waste services, because that contract started after the budget year was done, we need to create the the income, which is what we build the residence. And then the expense that goes out to Waste Connections on the water budget. And then there's the franchise fee that Waste Connection sends back to us based on the contract. And that would go to the city's income budget. So those will be three line items that would be created there. And same thing, so we can separate those expenses from the miscellaneous. And those are the recommendations I present.
Okay, any other questions, discussion?
You have a motion for that?
For thirteen and fourteen together?
Well, number thirteen is to approve the amendments. And then we have to amend the ordinance to reflect those changes.
So two separate ones?
Correct.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the changes made to the budget.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And number fourteen, discussion, possible action to approve the twenty twenty-two, it's supposed to be twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget ordinance changes to reflect the budget amendments.
Is it, you just want that read off exactly the way it is on that?
Correct.
Okay, I I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget ordinance changes to reflect a budget amendment.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second? I remember it was you.
It doesn't matter.
We go, all right. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, discussion and possible action to approve the advertising and solicitation for a request for qualifications, RFQs for an alternate city of Palm Valley Municipal Judge Mayor. I still haven't written the RFQ on that. I need to shop around for that.
To what we're doing in RFQs, it's not required.
It's not required, but I want to see what's out there. See if we can get either another municipal judge to step in or maybe even a justice of the peace. The option of having a justice of the peace as an alternate judge gives you the opportunity that if we ever have a felony case and that person leaves town, we don't end up in a situation where our officers are driving all the way across the state to pick them up. The county will go and pick them up if it's a justice of the peace warrant. So only leave all those options open and shop around for what's best for us.
Do we have an issue with, I think he's here right now, do we have an issue with Corhilla? That's my being the alternate judge at this point or?
I do have issue with that.
Okay. What would that issue be?
The issue was he went and attended a class without any authorization from the city. And he was somehow appointed without being brought to counsel. And so.
Okay.
Without getting specifics, we don't want to go down that road.
I just wondered.
All right, any other questions, discussion?
You need a motion on this?
Yes.
I I make a motion to approve the advertising and solicitation for a request for qualifications, RFQs for an alternate city of Palm Valley Municipal Judge.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, there's no other items. And all we need is the last one. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Motion, I have a second.
Second.
Scott, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close this meeting.
All right, good night, everybody.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.